Five P M. I would like to call the meeting to order, please, and ask for roll call.
Follig.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Stephen.
Here.
Brightfeller.
Here.
Grunier.
Here.
Gudrow.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is from the planning commission meeting. Our rep as trustee, Jeanie Carpenter. So I'll turn these items over to Jeanie. Thank you.
Sure. So item A is discussion of possible action regarding approval of a new general development plan submitted by Tom Graves, administrator and current property owner, for approvals to be made to the Oregon Manor campus at three-three-six and three-five-four North Main Street and three-three-seven and three-three-three Sodden Drive and add one-fifty East Lincoln Street. Do you want me to do these motions first, or do you want to hear Tom? Okay. So my first motion is that we suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings.
So move for a second, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then I'll introduce this motion so that we can have discussion. So my second motion is to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash oh-nine. This is an ordinance changing the zoning classification of approving a general development plan for and approving an S I P for property located at three-three-six and three-five-four North Main Street, three-three-seven and three-three-three Sodden Drive, and one-fifty East Lincoln Street from multifamily residential to planned development district. This ordinance approves the general development plan, the specific implementation plan, and the certified survey map for the Oregon Manor expansion. And then, please note, the planning commission's recommendation, including revising the new parking lot layout, and the attached plans show those revisions.
Second.
Thank you.
And Jeanie, those are on in front of you tonight.
I see that.
We got them.
Yep. So just if Tom, you want me to come up, and I'll just sum up. The planning commission was very in favor of this proposal, and a couple of the planning commission members suggested some changes to the parking lot, that you'll see where the current old Dentist building is. And it looks like, Tom, you made those changes exactly as they suggested.
Yeah.
So. And I don't know, have we, have you all seen this enough? Do you want, would you like Tom to give you an overview of the project?
Let's have a quick for people who are watching on TV in the audience.
Okay. What we had proposed, which had already been approved, is the addition of the Sodden Drive property, and then there was the G F P. I think we had that in place and was already approved. What we're now coming before is the dental property on Lincoln Street, one-fifty. So we're adding that to this prior property that was already approved. And part of the condition of the first, I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but the first reason we were here to get the approval was, one of the conditions was that we, when that property came available, we would put a parking lot on it. Well, the property became available between the time we were able to construct. And so now it seemed like, well, let's just do it all together at the same time. So now we come before you again asking, well, let's do the parking lot now. And basically, that's, I believe, simple way of stating what we're approving is saying we're ready to do the parking lot with the original addition.
Okay, good. Thank you. Are there questions or comments? The planning commission embedded this very thoroughly. Good discussion with Tom, and I'm very pleased that it's a good project for that area and the businesses that's supportive in Oregon. So are there any questions or comments? Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Quick and easy. So item four is review of senior center two thousand sixteen annual report and possible board action, the amendment to Dane County contract. And this will be by senior center director, Allison Kelch.
Did everyone have a chance to look over the annual report?
Similar format as we've had in the past few years. We always have a timely article on the front as to, you know, what currently is happening with seniors and with the center itself. And you can just see all the statistics that have changed and have increased and all the programming and services we offer, and where the revenue comes from. I think it's always interesting, too, to see the community collaborations and how many different groups we're partnering with in this community. And it just shows how far-reaching the departments in the village are with, with the whole community. Any questions on that?
I would just comment again, Allison, you mentioned the, the figures that show the increases, and that's real credit to you and your staff and what's happened there. And supporting a population, that's very important to support, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, we have a really great staff.
Question over here.
I enjoyed reading your report. It was very professionally done and contained a lot of subtle humor, too.
And then, as far as the addendum, that's a routine addendum for, through Dane County, funding for M A case management. And that needs approval before Steve can sign it.
So we need a motion to approve that contract?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Allison.
Yes, and I'll just get your signature before.
Item five is public appearances. Item A is alcohol compliance checks. Item one, review of Holly Alcohol Enforcement Issues Memorandum, Resolution Number sixteen dash eighteen and accompanying information. I will ask our attorney, Holly, I don't know your last name.
Wilson.
Wilson, thank you. Stepping in for Matt to kind of explain what the state laws and states.
Sure. So state law and the village's ordinances give the village a basis to spend, suspend or revoke a license if there's two violations of selling to underage persons in one year. And the village has set up sort of a system, the police department, where they do compliance checks each year. They go in and make sure that IDs are checked. And a couple of the village's licensees have been cited for selling to underage persons in violation of the alcohol statutes, that was state statutes. And so you, you asked me to sort of go through the process on suspension because it's, it's a pretty lengthy one. It almost mirrors a civil hearing. You would fight, you start with, you file a complaint. So in this case, any person can file a complaint against a licensee for violating state law or the village ordinances. And most communities would direct their police chief to do so. And the police chief could file that complaint. Then, just like in, in an average civil action, you have to serve the licensees the basis of the violation. And what happens then is you would hold a hearing. And the hearing is a little different here because the village board acts almost as a judge. You receive evidence from the police. And you decide whether the licensee is guilty of the violation, and you decide whether to suspend. So in this case, our role probably, Matt's role, would be to help the board take in evidence and come. counsel to represent the police, police, police chief and introduce evidence against the app, the licensee. And then the licensee obviously would get their chance to rebut that evidence and put on. Complaint. And Mike wanted to note that if you have your hearing and the board comes to the conclusion that yes, the complaint is true, and we want to move forward with some sort of suspension or revocation of the license, the suspension can't be less than ten days. It has to be more than ten days or less than ninety. So it's ten to ninety is your span. If you find the complaint isn't true, based on the evidence presented, you would just dismiss that complaint. And you would have to let the Department of Revenue know, obviously, if there was any decision on the suspension. And the licensee could appeal any decision of the board in a circuit court. So you'd have to keep that in mind. And should you decide to suspend any of the licenses, the business wouldn't have to close. They would just have to refrain from selling alcohol at that time. So they could sell food and remain open and things like that. And you could attach conditions to the suspension if you want alcohol, you know, out of the way. Locker, things like that. That's up to the board's discretion. And that's a pretty much overview of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
So our, our next item under this is to consider whether to initiate suspension or revocation process. And at our last meeting, we kind of talked about anywhere from we can handle this. It's a local community issue. We can handle this by talking to the proprietors, which we'll be doing in just a few minutes, or we can move to suspension. And I'm going to throw out my idea on suspension. I think ten days is probably not going to happen. Do we agree with that or not?
I agree with it.
Explain that a little better?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to suspend a license for ten days at this point in time. I mean, I would not be in favor of that. I don't know.
No.
So.
So you're saying that ten days would be too much?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think that'd be way too much. Now, I'm not saying that couldn't happen. If the same business fails every time they do compliance checks, that's a different situation going forward. But I think we need to send a message that this needs to get fixed. And I've asked both proprietors to, to be here in part to tell us what changes they're going to make to try to prevent this from happening. And they're going to be prepared to do that in just a few minutes.
So with this new information, can we have a conversation about kind of going back to that original decision that we made and updating it? We had originally set sort of a, a process that we would follow. And now that we agree that suspension revocation wouldn't happen, can we go back and amend that process to remove that?
There is.
Or to.
Resolution, yeah.
Or to qualify that?
What, what process are you referring to, Jeff?
So we had.
The resolution, Steve.
Okay, yeah, I got you. Okay.
Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I just, I would just like to review the resolution in light of this new information to make sure that it, it's an accurate template for how we would proceed. Because I think that people that have liquor licenses in the village are owed that. And I'd also like the guidance. Not that it would direct or dictate the decision, but I'd like the guidance.
The, the resolution is, mirrors state law. It's if it's two or more citations for underage, serving underage persons, you, that's a basis for suspension.
Okay.
So it's the same as state law.
It's just very general.
So what I'm hearing, though, and, and again, maybe this is something that could be kind of worked out and brought back as opposed to worked out here. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm hearing that for two violations, we wouldn't suspend somebody for ten days. Is that right?
Well, I, I would not want to do that. You know, if I was in Madison, it's a whole different situation.
Yeah.
With the, the liquor environment there. And that might be necessary there, in my estimation, but I don't think so here. But I think it's important to leave, leave what we have in place. Because, let's say, the same proprietor continues to violate compliance checks, then we may want to suspend for ten days. You know, we go another two years and they fail both of them every year, then in my mind, they're not doing a very good job. So I, I, if we leave it like it is, I don't think it changes anything. And we can go forward, leave it like it is until still the options available to do what we have right now. That's what I would see. But I'm only one person, so that doesn't have to be that way. Jerry?
Yes, I just want to point out that in the resolution itself, item four cleared, it was very clear to me, because it indicates that in the event of two more failed compliance checks, it's the policy to consider.
Yeah.
Consider the initiation of proceedings. Now, a course of action could be, and it's up to you, Steve, hear what the owners have to say or the operators have to say, and then we can make a motion, up or down on this. But we have the option to.
Actually, you're, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I wanted to just point something out. When Holly and Matt were helping me do the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's done this way so that if the board wants to initiate suspension or a revocation process, you actually don't talk to the agents.
Okay.
Because you're going to be deciding it. So that's, I purposely did it that way for the attorney's direction.
That works, that works for me, but I'm just.
I just want to make sure there's a, there's a procedure that you decide to do that, then you really shouldn't, because.
Very good.
You don't want them to say something they may regret, or the board regret, as you go through the process.
Okay, that's fine. How, how, you know, I, I'm not concerned about the, that part of the process.
Yeah.
I just wanted to indicate that we only have to consider doing it. So we have the option to do it.
Correct. Yep.
And with what Mike said, that's why I brought it up right away, that I would not be in favor of suspension of ten days. Because if we think we would be interested in suspending, then basically, we're done right now.
Yeah, you shouldn't talk to them.
Yeah, we shouldn't talk about it, because we have to be the judge going forward. You can't talk about it. I'm going to bring up that issue of, of, in my estimation, not suspending. It looks like that, that's what the board was. Because then we can talk to them, proceed, and. Does that make sense?
The date of the resolution is June sixth, two thousand sixteen, when we think voted to approve it. And one of the dates of the violations was prior to that. My question for the attorney would be, is that retroactively in effect to cover time passed before the resolution was enacted?
So the village ordinances adopt the state statutes with regard to alcohol licenses. And this resolution basically repeats what state law says you can do. So I, I don't really think the resolution has any bearing on whether you can suspend based on serving underage persons. Because you've had, you've already incorporated the entire state statutory scheme into your own ordinances. The resolution is just giving the board direction. Like an ordinance. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, essentially it does.
Doug, we were going to just make this a, like a policy, and, and we turned it into a resolution, because it's just easier to find when you're looking for it. This as a.
Covering the situation before the resolution was passed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Good observation also on the timing. Any other questions before we talk to the proprietors? Okay, so item three under A is possible discussion with agents from headquarters and Aces main tap. So I'll ask Jamie Bush to step up to the microphone, please, since headquarters listed first. And what we're, we would like to hear is what each of you will do to help make this work better, so we don't have compliance check violations. So.
Well, obviously, this is a big deal to everyone, and we are taking it seriously. One of the, I guess I would like to point out that we do have officers walking through our establishment about four to five times a month-ish in, in the, so in the two hundred times since we've been open, we've never actually had somebody who wasn't sent in cited. So, I mean, it's not like people are coming in and we're having this issue. I will say that one of the big things we're having is all of our issues have happened with part-time bartenders. They work one shift a week or two. We've really started to step up whether they understand what they are obligated to do. I think that sometimes they think this is an extra job. It's not their full-time job. And they're like, this is, you know, extra money. And so this has become a priority in terms of, like, it went out. We have them sign an alcohol awareness documentation, saying that anybody that looks under the age of thirty, they're going to ID every time. An option, you know, like, this is your job. Adam, who got the one a year ago, ours were fifty weeks apart, I believe. Adam was fired twelve hours later. Thirty in the morning, we discussed it. I looked at the video and terminated him. Posted that on the board. Screen printing. An officer, and so therefore, he figured he wouldn't be doing this if he was, and I was like, it's irrelevant. And I said, looked again at the video. He claimed that he was too busy. I'm like, they need to get their wallet out. They're never too busy to just hand you an ID. He was suspended for a week. So, I mean, we take our, and if he does anything within the next year, he'll be terminated. So, I mean, we're, we're putting repercussions on it, but we're also trying to do it as a learning tool. We're like, most of our full-time managers, they've all passed. Anytime that there has been a compliance check and it's been a manager, you know, or myself, it's like, we pass. I will say, we've had to kind of tweak our policies, because, like, I started at Stadium Bar. I've probably seen ten thousand IDs. I mean, I, I, throughout college, I was running Stadium Bar, and it's just every day, all the people. So most times when somebody actually hands you an ID, I actually had never experienced somebody handing me an ID that didn't say they were twenty-one. It might not be theirs, and it probably might be modified. But I never had anybody actually hand me an ID that said, I'm nineteen, you know, because I'm breaking the law and here's the proof. So that never happened. So that's one of those things where, we also had an incident where somebody took an ID, looked at it, and gave it back to him. And they were like, well, it looked like him. And I'm like, but you didn't read it. And that's, you know, that's what your job is. So, I mean, we're really kind of hammering in on this to the people that are part-time, because that really seemed to be where we were letting it slip through the cracks. In the summer, we do volleyball. Volleyball's very busy. Lots of teams. We have a stamping program. We started it last year. Anybody who played for us knows, if your team walks in, if they look young, they walk right up to the hostess stand, they show their ID. We have forty-some different stamps in eight different colors. We pick a different color and a different stamp every night. So you show your ID, you get a stamp, and then that way, whether you're on the courts, whether you're at the bar, we know that you've been stamped, we know you've been IDed. So that way, we don't have to have people running around going, wait, you were playing, oh, wait, now you're over here. Because then that was becoming confusing. And then it was, you know, the potential for somebody to, to slip through. So really, that's what we've tried to implement. And most of it has just been more reinforcement of the policies that we've had, that we're trying to make people understand that are not an option. It is never too, I mean, it's never too busy to actually pull out your wallet. You're going to have to pay at some point, anyway. Most everybody starts a credit card tab most days now, anyway. Their wallet's open, their card's out. Ask them for their ID. It's not hard. I mean, sorry, I'm annoyed by it. But, I mean, anyway, I'm sorry, that's.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Chief, do you have any comments you'd like to make right now?
No, I, I mean, you know, I empathize with Jamie and any other person. We've had good conversations before, and I think that he does what he can, for the most part, with his bartenders, to, to make sure that they're IDing people. You know, and, and that's an interesting point that you make about no one really hands you an ID that's under twenty-one. That's an interesting point. But, you know, as far as the law goes, it's not something we can do. We're not trying to intentionally deceive you or anyone else. So we have to actually use real IDs. I mean, I do have a copy of, of the ID that was actually used. And, you know, it does have on the ID, it says, under twenty-one, right on the top, U twenty-one. So you don't have to look very hard necessarily to find those things. But yeah, I think that, you know, it's a difficult job. It's tough to train, especially part-time folks as well. But, you know, we, we're doing what, what the board mandates us to do, and we, we don't have compliance, and we have to report that. And I think it's tough for some of the folks to be able to do that and comply. But it's also an easy job if they do actually look at the IDs. You know, yes, we're busy. Yes, not, it's not normal for people to, you know, give us IDs that are under twenty-one. But that happens. And so we got to pay attention. Yeah.
Are there questions for Jamie?
No, thanks, Jamie.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Kevin?
Anybody doesn't know, I'm Kevin Asa on the main tap. And I've had meetings with all the staff members, reminding them that it's unacceptable, and reminding them that it's just not a good idea to be selling alcohol to minors. We've gone through all that. We're going to get signs posted on the front door. Anybody that comes in has to be IDed, anybody that looks under thirty-five. And, you know, I really don't know what else to say. We have thought about this every day since it happened, and I feel really bad and embarrassed. And I just talk to them as much as I can about it. Remind them, you got to, you got to check IDs, no matter how busy it is.
Good. So I, I've told you both in the conversation we had prior to this meeting that I think it's, in my estimation, important to just have your manager on duty when somebody starts to shift your mind and need to check IDs. No excuses. And that's a good thing to mean. And no excuses, check IDs.
It's unacceptable.
Yeah.
Unacceptable practice.
Chief, anything?
Yeah, I don't have anything further. I, I have not met Kevin, is it?
Kevin.
I've not met Kevin. So, no, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to, to step up the, the enforcement of this. You know, I'm just looking at our list here, and it looks like main tap has only been cited a couple times, it looks like, since two thousand fourteen. You know, and, and I think, you know, you're fairly busy over there as well. But I'm, you know, I'm not going to reiterate what I said to Jamie as well, so.
That's no excuse.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Any questions for Kevin?
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. That's all. Go forward, like you said, and we appreciate it. Okay, we'll go to item six, Village Attorney and Village Ministry Report, discussion possible action. We got an ordinance number seventeen dash zero-eight, and ordinance to amend section seven point zero-four-one, relating to speed limits on Brook Street. The recommended motion is waive the second reading and move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero-eight.
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I would like to add that I got no emails regarding this since the last meeting. Did you?
No. And Public Works did deliver information. They didn't deliver it yet.
We had delivered letters to all the residents along Brook Street, and also mailed them to, if they were also owners, but not, but not tenants.
Yeah, okay. So, thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So any discussion of questions here? We talked about this quite a bit. Jerry?
Just a quick one. We've dealt with this over several meetings, and my memory doesn't serve me right now. But if I remember correctly, this was the chief's recommendation, right? That we.
Well, it was based on the complaint that we received. And then after we analyzed the street itself, put the speed trailer out there several times. You know, I think Jeff and I worked together to, to come up with a resolution on what was the best signage and what was the best speed limit for the street.
All right. So you still agree with this, this change?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? So we have the motion in second to waive the second reading and move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B relates to Brook Street, Brook Street and other streets also going forward. Discussion possible action about placing temporary speed humps on Brook Street. We have information from Director of Public Works, Jeff Rowell, in our packet, showing them on prices and so on.
This was a recommendation, just, I sent an inquiry out to some of my friends, as well as contacts, and, and just to ask if they'd used similar type temporary devices. One of my contacts in the city of Whitewater said they've had good luck using these. As you can see from the information supplied, when you, when you buy one, I mean, you want one that's definitely wide enough, else then people start to try to skirt around it. There is obviously some time to take them, or to install them and to take them up every winter. And there, I think, one twenty-five foot section of this is about a thousand pounds, I believe. So they're not, yeah, nine hundred and eight pounds. So, and just looking at it, it would be probably six to seven thousand dollars, seventy-five hundred to do, to, to kind of create a nice slow zone through that area, if that's what you would like to do.
Jerry?
Yes, I just, I assume this was not budgeted.
This is not budgeted.
Okay. And then, so how will we pay for this?
Well, I should actually, well, this was not, this was not a recommendation coming from the Director of Public Works.
What he's saying is it came from me.
I'm trying to be politically correct here.
So Steve's going to.
He's actually being nice tonight.
Steve's going to find the money. That's, that, no.
You're going to find it.
I, yeah.
I, actually, what we, what we would do is if the board wants to do this, it sort ties into your question you asked me before the meeting about the equipment. So typically, when we have smaller items in the capital improvement plan, we, we have cash in our fund four-fourteen to, or four, four oh-five, street improvements to pay for things like this. This year, we don't, because we spent most of the cash last year. We didn't borrow money for a lot of, it was in four-fourteen. So how we would pay for this, Lisa, right, would be that, once we finish the audit, we're going to come back to the board, and we're going to transfer some fund balance from the general fund into four-fourteen and four-oh-five. So we pay it for that. You could pay it out of, we're going to borrow money in seventeen, you could pull a little bit of that, out of that borrowing for this. There's a couple ways of doing it.
So to be determined, I guess, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we can find the cat, we can find a way of doing it.
Okay.
If the board wants to do it.
All right. A question for Jeff again. You said these are anchored?
Yeah, they're anchored to the asphalt.
Okay. Are they stakes or?
They're, they're, they're a kind of a screw-in, you drill into the asphalt, you screw into it. And then when you're ready to take them out, you, you back them out.
So can staff install and remove those?
Our staff can install and remove those, yeah.
So when you're done with them for the season, do you plug the holes so the, we don't get moisture in there that causes cracking and damage to the road?
I guess we could. I mean, we have just, we're talking probably only three-eighths inch diameter. bolts, um, across the entire way, but, uh, we'd probably.
Well, I mean, I, I.
I don't know. I, it's not something we've installed. Uh, we don't have many temporary installations in the village.
Right.
That are like this. Um, you know, I, I don't wanna, and, and I, I joked around a little bit with Steve here, you know, as far as, I, I don't disagree that these would be nice to have. Uh, the, the concern I always have is, is, um, once we do this in one location, why aren't we doing it in other locations, in front of other schools, and, and that type of thing? And, um, you know, I, we, we have, we have a limited staff, and we have a limited amount of time to be able to accomplish a lot of things, and, and, you know, our busy times are spring and fall, and those are times when a lot of stuff is going on, so. Um, but, I mean, if, if the board wants to go ahead and, and purchases and install, we'll install them and maintain them and everything, and that's not a problem at all.
Right, right. So were you thinking of plugging the holes or not?
We would all plug the holes.
You say, was that a yes?
Yes.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying.
Dog on the phone over there.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, yeah, you have, I mean, I'm not saying you have to, I'm just asking.
Well, I, I don't know. That's, that's a question I don't, I don't know, you know, if that would be, uh, I mean, it would probably just be something that would, like a, uh, an asphalt-type grout or something like that.
I don't know. I just, a question I had when I looked at the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, is that something we could rent for a season to see if there's merit to it?
I'm not familiar with any rental of this type of stuff. The, the only thing I've seen used on a temporary, a real temporary basis is sometimes people will just use old fire hose or old, uh, like, if it's really thick rope, I've seen that used, like, anchor rope for, uh, large ships and stuff like that, where they'll lay that across the road, and that can, uh, um.
Just so you know, that was a recommendation, uh, a staff member came back from a trip from Central America, and that's what, that's what they did. They put, they threw rope down over, over the roads.
Slowed people down.
Well, I mean, we don't know that this is gonna work.
Well, for sure, it's gonna slow cars down.
Right.
And that, if that's the intent, it's gonna work.
There's been lots of studies on traffic calming devices, and whether they work and whether they don't work, and, you know, uh, temporary speed humps in this area will probably work to slow them down immediately, but then you're gonna have the possible complaints of they're racing between the two, you know, getting over, speed up to the next one, and then stop, and then speed up again.
And the, and the noise.
Yeah.
People hitting them, trucks, with the equipment, yeah.
Those are all things to consider, but yeah, they're gonna slow people down right when they get to the hump, for sure.
Or what you do is you, people will stop going down Brook Street. That's the other thing they do.
That's.
They move, they move traffic onto other streets.
Come down Park Street.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah.
That could be an option, just close the street.
You know, I'm, I'm all in favor of, of, um, making prudent adjustments to traff, to traffic to prevent accidents from happening, but I still keep coming back in my mind to Oak Street, and I would never consider driving, I probably don't go fifteen miles an hour when there are soccer tournaments on both sides of the road. I'm not even looking at the speedometer.
Right.
No, I'm just looking at the fact that kids could be coming from the left or the right, and I've gotta be prepared to stop. So in my mind, if there's baseball going on, if there's kids avail, if there's kids around, and there's, especially if there's a sign up that says fifteen miles an hour when children are present, um, which takes away the guesswork as to whether children may be present or not for me, I just don't see people flying down that street regardless of what kid might come out from between cars. It's kind of unconscionable to me. So I don't know that we need to take any extra steps or spend money, uh, in this particular way. You know, when we talk about other things like, um, crosswalk assistance, um, over Janesville Street, or when we talk about crosswalk assistance over Highway M, or things of that nature, or Pleasant Oak, that's a different story. But in this particular case, when you're talking about flow of traffic and, and kids coming, coming out in between cars, I just don't see a need.
Other thoughts?
I guess I, I would agree with Jeff. Um, so, I mean, we've, we've had, we've had one resident on that street be very vocal in her opinion on that. We've actually asked other residents to come forward, we've asked other residents to email. They aren't, and I just, we're gonna spend seventy-five hundred dollars because one person has complained.
For each, right?
No, that's total.
That's total, we're total for two.
I don't know. And it doesn't sound, my hangup also is our staff is not recommending it. Our staff is saying, "I'll do it because it sounds like the board wants me to."
Mm-hmm.
And that, I, I don't think that's a good, also a good precedent to follow is to, um, ignore our staff's recommendation, even though he's doing it very politically. So I, I probably wouldn't vote for this.
I had some discussion on this item, and I didn't come out and say, but I, I'm very skeptical. I guess if it came to a vote, I'd have to decide when the vote was, was, uh, asked or the motion was made, but, uh, push came to shove, I'm not, I, I don't see myself voting for this either.
Sounds like that takes care of it then. So one reason I'm in favor of this is, um, and my daughter lives in Portland, Maine, and, and there's a street there, um, she said it must be somebody politically correct connected because they have a lot of speed bumps, but it's, it clearly slows things down. Uh, in, in my mind, uh, you know, one car going too fast, which some do, and I don't think a lot do, but some do, and one kid gets hit, um, and I think there's a pretty high likelihood that that, that that's where it would happen if it's going to there, or Oak Street. Um, but clearly, uh, the board's not in favor, so, uh, we should move on to the next item, right?
Well, did we change the speed there at all?
Yeah.
It was fifteen.
Yes, not twenty-five.
No, it's twenty-five.
Except when children are present, it's still fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Could we call the question?
We don't have a motion. We'd have to have a motion in second to even vote on this. We don't even have a motion right now, so seeing no motion right now, unless there's one made, I will go to the next item. Okay, thank you. So we'll go to item C, uh, discussion possible action, ordinance number seventeen dash zero six, and ordinance to amend sections one point three one one A relating, relating to residency of the park board. Uh, recommended motion is to waive the second reading and move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero six.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, maybe?
What are your thoughts about this, Doug?
I think it's very appropriate to utilize the talents of people who, whose families and friends might be using the park system. It's benefited the Historic Preservation Commission quite substantially over time, and I think the same thing would be true with the park board.
Any further questions? Okay, so we have a motion in second to approve, to waive the second reading and move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero six. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item D, discussion possible action, ordinance number seventeen dash zero seven, and ordinance to amend section two point one four, relating to action and ordinances, and the recommended motion is to waive the second reading and move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero seven.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Comments?
This, this cleans up the, the confusion that Matt found in the municipal code about the waiving of readings. It takes the full board to do that now, majority of the board to do it, sir, majority of the board to do it.
Any questions? So we have the motion in second to waive the second reading, adopt, move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Special meetings from January twenty-five, two thousand sixteen, and February eight, two thousand sixteen, and then March twenty, two thousand seventeen.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we have vouchers tonight, in amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
Second, thank you. Questions?
I'm sorry, was it, Jerry, you, you moved?
I think Darlene did.
Oh, I heard Darlene's.
Or Jeff did, and Darlene's second.
Got it, thank you.
I was too slow. Tried to get in there. You heard me, but I got, I was late.
Are there questions?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, Timberland landscape, I guess this is a question for Jeff. Um, we had some, uh, payments to them for shoveling and salting, and that, as I recall, is because we had an employee on, on leave?
Uh, well, yes, we, we retained Timberland through this winter season.
Because we had, we were missing a staff member.
Well, we were actually down two staff members, basically.
Has, has either one returned?
Mark, yes, uh, the one has returned.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one I have is probably for Lisa. Uh, it's, uh, a payment to Ziggy's for the senior center catering meals.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that was paid by the county.
We, we get the money from the county.
It's pass-through.
It's approximately seven thousand.
Okay.
Yep, it's a pass-through.
Thank you, Allison and Lisa, and Mike.
It's pass-through, Jerry.
Yeah. Any other questions? So we have, uh, vouchers tonight, in amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents for approval. Roll call, please.
Udrell?
Yes.
Grunier?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Kuthauer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you. But item nine, which is community input, is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to item ten, uh, proclamations and announcements. Item A, Board Comments. One, Chamber Events, uh, April twenty-first, Mayhem's Liquor, eleven AM ribbon cutting. April twenty-sixth, Jefferson Crossing, nine AM groundbreaking, and April twenty-seventh, P. Hyphomes, one PM ribbon cutting, and they're opening on May first.
And we also have the twenty-fourth Food Pantry at four, right?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, yeah.
And I don't know how many board members are gonna wanna be there, but depending, you may, you may have to notice that.
Yeah, we may.
If you are, right?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth at four o'clock.
A groundbreaking?
Yeah.
Well, are we still gonna make the five o'clock meeting?
Yes.
You, you won't talk to all?
I promise to keep my comments short.
End of meeting or the groundbreaking?
The groundbreaking.
Okay, so we'll go to staff comments, uh, spring election results, Nikki?
So the projected turnout for the election, um, I heard was supposed to be about thirteen to eighteen percent, and it looks like we outdid ourselves again with twenty-five percent, so, um, and everything went as well as it could possibly go. Um, I do have to thank Elizabeth and Candy Jones for all of the help that they did. Um, as you may have heard, I wasn't feeling so well, so they did extra, went above and beyond, so I thank them and all of the staff that have worked on, um, the absentee ballots in the office, because it makes things a little busier in there, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions about anything, but.
Just thanks to you and your staff for another job well done.
Yeah.
It's always nice to have that go well.
And the volunteers, all those smiling faces, all the volunteers that come in, are part of that, kind of the unsung heroes.
Yeah.
I have two committee assignments, Mike?
Everyone has, uh, submitted their emails to me, and I appreciate it. I've, Steve, I forwarded, I think I've sent all that to you, so.
Yeah, okay.
So now we're working on the, uh, agenda for, for Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
And April twenty-ninth, at ten AM, there's a tour of the Hermsson property for the, uh, is that a conservation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the park board, uh, is gonna do it, and I always make the board aware of these tours, so if you're interested, you could e- either email me or Candy, if you're gonna, if you wanna attend. It's ten o'clock.
And that, if I could ask a question, um, we may be considering purchasing that property, is?
Uh, it'd be a donation.
A donation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, be, that's gonna come probably back to the board, um, probably May first, I'm thinking. We, we received the letter now from his attorney, and, um, so what has to happen now is a donation agreement has to be put together, so, for the board.
Will that require more staff?
Well, the, it's, it's sort of, it's somewhat interesting that, um, we would not be getting the property, it, it could be ten or fifteen years before the property actually becomes a park. Um, there'd be an agreement between the village and, and the family, um, and that'd, that's part of the donation agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
But what, it will require some village staff time in the future, absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, item four, status highway CC, Jefferson Street project with Dane County. Jeff?
Um, it's going along nicely. I believe we, the, uh, tentative agreement we have has been sent back to Dane County for signature, and we'll wait for that to come back, but they're still on schedule to be, uh, paving. I imagine the Dane County work will mostly be in, um, July and first week, first two weeks of August. We want everything to be wrapped up by the time school starts. You'll, you'll be seeing the, uh, contract award recommendation for North Borough and the Jefferson Street Water Main, which is the piece that has to precede the Dane County work, and you'll be seeing that on, we decided, next Monday or Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday, yeah.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, item five, upcoming meetings, there are a list of meetings there with, uh, items that will be on those agendas. Any comments on those?
No.
Mike, is it, is it really the meeting on April twenty-seventh? Because that's a Thursday, or is it supposed to be April twenty-fourth?
Oh, good catch, sorry, Doug, you're right, it's twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I wanted to let you all know that we have some more community conversation dates set. We're really excited to be working with the youth center on May third. We're going to do a community conversation session with the teens that utilize the center to get their perspective. We will have one open to the general public on Tuesday, May sixteenth at five thirty p.m. That will take place at the Firefly in the back room there, and there's an online registration form up and available now on the library's website. And then, thirdly, we recently received permission to do sort of an abbreviated version, which is just a simple ask exercise rather than a full conversation with the Oregon area food pantry in May. So that will allow us to make ourselves available to ask for questions to anyone who's interested in participating on their normal pickup day.
Okay.
Then additionally, I have a sort of a temperature-taking question for the board members, and this is in regard to the library board. As you know, we meet once a month, and that happens on the second Wednesday of the month. And I know that there are many moving pieces as we move ahead with the civic campus plan, but I was wondering, at what point in time would you like to see the library board begin discussions on if they have a preference for the options of the civic campus plan, A through C, and also, separate point, use of library impact fees? If you would like to see those discussions begin this month, or is that something that you think would be best to wait until the process gets a little further along? I know, it's kind of a big question, and I had asked Mike, and he suggested I ask you.
No, I appreciate that. My reaction, and again, I'm only one person, I think we need to wait a bit yet as we look at the financial part, which will start to pin things down more as to where and when and how much.
Okay.
If I could offer some input too on that question, actually, that was several questions, I think, but I think I'd like to hear more from our planner.
As I say, so Mike Sladine will be here on next Tuesday to continue the discussion on the civic campus plan, and actually, what Nikki and I are gonna share with you is she did a really nice spreadsheet of a survey of other libraries in the area, as well as backup information that Wanta Key put together for their new library, so you're gonna find it helpful.
Okay.
So that'll be in your packet for next Tuesday.
I do think the piece that's missing from the conversation, and it's just gonna become more of an issue and not less, is there isn't a clear definition of roles and responsibilities as we go forward with the library board, and that's not fair to them. And it's really not fair to you either, Mike, for that matter. I know that Matt rolled out the ordinances that govern
Yeah.
the construction of libraries, and I know that even within the ordinance language, if you read it one way, there was rights and responsibilities on the board. If you read it another way, they all shifted to the village. So I really, I would like to see you and Matt and Nikki sit down and define
Sure.
those responsibilities, and to see you bring those back to the board so that we're clear, and also to be able to bring those eventually to the library board so that they're clear. Because again, what I'm hearing from the library board is, we're ready to start participating, but we don't know what to do. We've got ideas, but we don't know how to share them, and I just don't think that's a good, that's not a good way to go forward together.
But I think the number one issue is, where is the library going? I think that's what Nikki's asking for a little, and I think Steve was saying, let's just maybe wait one more meeting. That issue that you're bringing up, I have had some just initial discussions with Matt about that, because Matt may recommend or make the comment that if the board makes a motion to put the library wherever you put it, does that mean you've now given the authority to, you've given that property to the library board under chapter forty-three, does that mean basically it's their property? So Matt may caution you to say, this is exactly what you're saying, Jeff, have that worked out, what is the board, the village board's relationship and interaction's gonna be with the library board once the library gets built, so...
You know, and as to the choices, I feel like I need to reiterate this, even though I realize that maybe you're asking the question because you don't agree with me. But, you know, I talked, when Mike Sladine presented this to the board the first time, Mike estimated that they spent five hundred hours studying the options. Mike said that he had thirty-five years' experience in village planning. How much did we pay, Mike, to create a central campus recommendation?
Fifty thousand dollars.
So we spent fifty thousand dollars of village money. In my mind, I can't conceive of something that we are gonna uncover, that they didn't consider, and I can't conceive of going against their recommendation. It would almost be unconscionable to me to say, I just wasted fifty thousand dollars of the village residents' tax money, and I'm completely disregarding five hundred hours' worth of work and thirty-five years' worth of experience because I know better. Now, I know that we all asked for time to elapse so that we could review the recommendation. I don't know whether we have or whether we haven't, but the sooner we can chuck that off our list of things to do, the sooner we can get to work.
Next Tuesday.
May I clarify?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, the point of asking the question, as far as if the library board has a preference to locations, that actually goes back to a question I was asked here on another evening by one of the members of the village board. Nikki, what does the library board want? And I wasn't able to answer that. That's where that came from, so I didn't know if that was something that you were seeking feedback on.
Thank you. But I do repeat myself, and many times it's because I don't realize people just don't agree with me, so...
That wasn't what this was about.
I'm fully aware that people might not agree with me on this particular issue, and if I'm repeating myself, I'm conscious of it. I'm trying to get better, so thank you for clarifying, though. I did like the way you phrased the question. Would you like us to come back next week or the week after, as opposed to would you like us to come at all?
Other thoughts?
Well, there is a rather important issue that hasn't been resolved yet, and that's the tax levy.
Yeah. Which we're working on.
Yes, yep. Yeah, we're going, it's sort of a parallel thing that we're working on here. I mean, in some respects, the location of the library, you know, if you pick a site for the library, it doesn't mean that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna spend this much money on the library building. I mean, I think that's what Jeff's getting at. Mike looked at the alternatives, or his staff did, sorry, all the options, and the plan is saying, library should go there, we should do this over there, we should do this over here, and Mike's not saying what to build and at what cost. He's just saying, as far as planning, those are locations, yeah.
I think, Jeff, we're headed down the direction you're talking about, and I think we just wanna hear that financial part first and start to pull that together and then proceed, and that's a big discussion on the eighteenth. Now, that's usually a ten-minute meeting to make all the appointments. It's gonna be considerably more than that, but it'll be a real important meeting. A great one for Jenna to jump into.
So I think what I'm hearing is that it's okay to wait. We're not holding up the process by not having these discussions at this time.
And I think we can do more to answer that on the eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Find out more where we are.
Thank you, appreciate the direction.
And if there are directors or others that are chomping at the bit to participate, I would encourage them to come to these meetings. There's always a forum for residents to come and speak. And most of the times when we get into these discussions with elders, Steve pitches it out to the audience and asks if anybody has a question of Steve, so I don't think that they necessarily need to be invited to come. I think residents of the village are always invited to come and share their thoughts.
Yeah, that's why I have the public information and communication time, if people wanna speak to the board.
I would just add one thing too. Nikki, I don't think you ever have to be afraid to ask our permission for your board to discuss something, you know what I mean? If you wanna start discussing it and have some thoughts, I think that's fine, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's...
They're being very sensitive to that. They don't get out of the process we're going through.
Yeah, I get that, but...
I guess I just wanna caution one thing. I'm not sure on the eighteenth, just so you know, next Tuesday, we're gonna have a decision made on the finances. It's, I have a feeling after we go through the CIP tonight that we'll probably, Lisa and I are gonna probably take some time working with Jim Mann to refine the CIP, and when Jim comes here in the middle of May, we're probably gonna talk about the finances.
Yes.
So I'm gonna make sure the board doesn't think that we're gonna have some answers next Tuesday on the financial side of it.
Yeah.
Unless you have them, and we'll listen to them, and... No, I'm seriously, we'll see.
Anything else you report?
No, thank you, that's everything.
Yeah, thank you very much. So item B is an FYI, information from village assessor regarding assessments.
I can handle this. So I put a copy of the page on the webpage, 'cause I know people receive their assessments, and our assessor will be here on April fourteenth, May fifth, and then we're gonna have open book dates, are they April seventeenth and eighteenth, and then board reviews on May twenty-second. So if you go on the village's webpage, you can click into this and see, and the village had, obviously, I think what we told us in an email was that basically the village's values have recovered from the recession, if I look at that way, yeah.
Any questions? Okay, item C, update regarding race day event, designated route for the two thousand seventeen event. Jeff?
Yeah, if you remember, they came and we were talking about routes, and then I think it was the very next day, I had a conversation with somebody that we might, or I think it was someone from the library that brought it to my attention, that the day that they were planning the race, which was June eleventh, I believe, happened to be right on graduation day, and that further solidified the fact that we need them, it's okay for them to come through town very early, but we can't have that return route coming back through town, which would stretch from eleven o'clock till two or three in the afternoon. And so I let them know that any route would have to be a one-way-through-the-village type of route. They're working with the city of Pittsburgh right now to be able to bring them back through that, so they haven't come back to us with a finalized route. But as it seems or stands right now, they should be coming down Netherwood, up Alpine Parkway, over to Oregon Parks, and then up Bergamot, all the way up to the top of the hill, and then out Lincoln to Glenway, I believe it is, so... We're still working with them.
You okay with that, chief?
I am.
Okay. And I see you have a requirement to notify the churches, Jeff, so...
Yeah, I sent them, I sent them the information from the chamber, the chamber book of all the churches and everything, so it was very nice and handy to be able to send that to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on that? Okay, we'll go to item D, discussion possible action, new annual TIF reporting requirements for two thousand seventeen. Recommended motion, approve the engagement letter with elders up to fifty-five hundred dollars for the annual TIF reports, which will be charged to the TIF districts.
Sumo.
Second.
Thank you.
So this is a new requirement that the state has put on us, and we have to do this on an annual basis, and what we're seeing up to is, I think Lisa and I are gonna probably do some of the work that's in elders' proposal, because we're gonna do, we're gonna do a combination of the annual report as well as having the joint review board look at TIF five, so kind of blend it together in one meeting day. Probably it'll be July thirteen. We're gonna submit the report to the Department of Revenue before that, but, and the joint review board does not have to approve it, it's just the reporting that we have to show the joint review board every year, a report on the three TIFs that we have.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So we have the motion to second to approve the engagement letter with elders up to fifty-five hundred dollars for annual TIF reports, charged to the TIF districts, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Steve, can we get Jim on the phone?
Yep.
Nikki, would you mind?
So, Mike, I have a question about these next, E through J.
Yeah.
These next items.
Mm-hmm.
So just for my own clarification, when I think about the tax levy, I think about borrowing.
Mm-hmm.
I think about the impact of borrowing on the tax levy.
Mm-hmm.
When I think about borrowing, I think about issuing general obligation bonds. Am I disconnected? Are these different things?
That's why we're getting Jim Mann on the phone.
So they're, yeah, so they're the same?
Same thing, yep.
So a moment ago, you were saying that before we decided, you know, on what we were going to, or how we were going to increase the levy, we were gonna have a further conversation with Jim Mann. Were you referring to this part of the agenda?
I'm referring to, hi, Jim, this is Mike.
Hi, Mike.
So Jeff, what we are, what I'm saying there is that, when we get to the item on the agenda that deals with the cap improvement plan, which is K.
Uh-huh.
So Jim did this analysis for us for the debt for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two. I was assuming the board's gonna probably want us to tweak the CIP a little bit, and then Jim will rerun these sheets that he did for us.
Yeah.
So that's what I was referring to.
So as I go into this, though, 'cause I just wanna make sure that I'm making appropriate votes up to K, and not get to K and realize I wasn't thinking straight from E through J.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is, is that E through J is going to be about approving the sale of general obligation bonds, which is the same thing as borrowing.
Correct.
And that will affect the tax levy in some way.
Correct.
And then K is gonna be, in which way it will affect the tax levy?
So we're borrowing for, this is for our seventeen borrowing that we're gonna do with Jim Mann right now?
Yeah.
So when we get to K, that's eighteen through twenty-two, so things that will be on that, in that CIP
I see.
would be, we'd be back here in eighteen, borrowing for eighteen, and we'll be back here in nineteen, borrowing for nineteen.
So E through J is seventeen borrowing?
Exactly.
Got it.
It's got nothing to do with going forward and capturing anything further than seventeen borrowing.
And that's already been, has that already been discussed relative to the impact on the tax levy of seventeen borrowing?
Well, actually, it's in, it was in the packet when Jim Mann was here.
Right.
And it's also in the packet again tonight. We're trying to show you, when you, the impact of borrowing and the impact of the operating levy together in that one sheet that Lisa and I prepared.
Okay.
So if you look on, let me find it here real quick here. I know I'm looking at a hard copy, sorry, I'm looking under eleven K two, and so...
Right, we looked at this in a previous meeting, didn't we?
Yep, so for an average house worth two fifty-seven, in eighteen, just for debt service, your taxes go up about seventy-six bucks, seventy-six dollars, excuse me.
Got it.
Again, that's an estimate, and there's a lot of things that we have to do before we do the budget in eighteen, but that, so what you're borrowing seventeen will start to hit in eighteen.
I feel like I'm caught up now. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Happy to be here.
Okay, so you want me to read each motion, Mike, and see what questions we have?
Or do you want, Jim, do you just maybe wanna do this, an overview of what the board's doing tonight, please?
Sure.
Okay.
Basically, you have a series of resolutions on the agenda this evening. They're gonna accomplish two things. One is gonna set the sale for the issuance of corporate purpose bonds, and those are going to be for some of the, is the purchase of the property, which we have included, we show it as library purchase, because we have to put a purpose that fits within the statute. There's also some water utility work, some sewer utility work, and then also some tax increment work, that are all included in the corporate purpose bonds. And the reason we are issuing corporate purpose bonds is because they have a life that is greater than ten years. So that's why you have a series of resolutions. You have a resolution for each purpose, and then we have another resolution that combines them all into one corporate purpose, and then you have a resolution that's putting out a notice to the electors, because when you issue bonds, you are subject to a referendum requirement that in the event that the citizenry is not happy with the issuance of the bonds, they can petition to have the projects or the borrowing go to referendum. So included in the seventeen B issue is really the purchase of the public property, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is the old method of church.
Correct.
You've got the sewer system improvements, water system improvements, and then some minor infrastructure work in tax increment district number three. When you put that all together with issuance costs, we aggregate a total of two million dollars for the borrowing of bonds. You have a second borrowing that's on the agenda this evening, which is for notes. While notes are much broader in terms of their applicability, in terms of what you could borrow for, you have a limitation when you borrow with notes that you can't go over ten years, and for the purposes of the note borrowing, it includes a lot of equipment purchases that we couldn't have otherwise borrowed through the corporate purpose bonds, as well as your annual street program, which we're keeping to a ten-year... Look at the total impact, just to clarify, the note borrowing is for a total of a million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we've broken that basically down into two categories. A series of expenditures that have five-year amortization, because the lifecycle of the asset that you're acquiring is five years or less, and then those that have up to a ten-year lifecycle for the remaining piece of that. But when you look at the aggregating the entire borrowing into one package, so to speak, the impact be about a thirty, thirty cent impact in terms of what it's gonna cost the taxpayers on the tax rate, and that, again, is gonna be dependent upon what's gonna happen with the overall equalized value of the village, and what else happens with your budget, but this is for capital purposes only, and as Mike indicated, it ends up being about a seventy dollar increase on the average home taxes for two thousand eighteen. The pages that we included in the pre-sale reports only look at the two thousand seventeen, they didn't really, I didn't stretch them out to deal with the eighteen through twenty-two years at this point for the purposes of the pre-sale reports. The reports themselves just go through the details of the two borrowings, when the bonds, when the bonds or the notes would be callable, the type of sale we're going to be doing, which is gonna be a competitive sale, any risk factors that are out there. Because you're issuing general obligation bonds for the water utility, the sewer utility, and the tax increment district, we anticipate that there's gonna be revenues that can offset those, those pieces, 'cause you're borrowing for a revenue-supporting entity, so to speak, but there is the risk that if that revenue's not available, you still have to levy taxes, because these are general obligation bonds. We also set forth that the other service providers that we're looking at, which are, you utilize Quarles and Brady as your bond counsel. If you also utilize the Bontraw services as paying agents, there may be some consideration of disclosure counsel, and that's a discussion that the village would have with the Quarles and Brady. But then it also talks about some of the particulars of the sale in terms of what the maximum discount would be, which is the profit the underwriter could take, or on the other side, if they're gonna pay you more money than you're asking for, which is the premium, the maximum the premium would be, and how we would handle those issues. But it's just the basics of what's gonna happen on sale day in terms of what the sales would look like. When you look at the interest rates that we have included in the bonds, they range from about one percent in two thousand eighteen out to about three and a half percent in two thousand twenty, thirty-seven, it's a long ways out there these days. It's a long ways out there these days. Uh, but when you blend that all down, our estimate right now is that the, the, the borrowing would cost somewhere around two-point-nine percent on a blended rate for the bonds, um, and about, uh, uh, two-point-one percent for the notes.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim, that was helpful.
Yeah.
So, so Jim, I have a tag that entered in twenty thousand dollars. Purpose that's consistent, uh, with what the borrowing is being used for. So my question for you is, what if we
that will, that, that not a huge issue for us. The only time it becomes an issue for us is in the event that you were to take that property and then dispose of it to a private entity for some sort of redevelopment. Um, the reason we had to pick the library as the entity is because state statute is very specific. Now, it includes public works facilities, includes police departments, with fire departments, includes libraries, does not include village halls, but it includes specific purposes in terms of what you can build in terms of facilities. And so we had to pick one, and since that, the, the thought is, is there, there's a likelihood that the library would end up there, that's what we landed on. I wish I could just say it was gonna be for public facilities, but I can't, um, from a legal perspective. In the event that the decision is made not to, um, uh, build a library on that site, then we'll have to figure out what other purpose it might be used for from a village perspective. And if not, then we're gonna have, uh, an issue, and, and we just have to work through the details if you're transferring it to a private entity, how that would work and what the implication would be, uh, on the debt that you've already issued.
Any further questions for Jim? Jerry?
Yes, thanks, Steve. Uh, Jerry Bollig here, Jim. Actually, I had the same question that Jeff just asked, but if I could, uh, zero in a little, a little bit more, that is for the payment of the library lot, or the, not the library lot, but the Methodist church property that we purchased recently.
And, and some other, and some other items that are in the seventeen borrowing for the library.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, I guess that, um, if we don't, if we decide not to build a library up there, how big a problem is that, Jim?
It's a bigger problem if you transfer the pro- property to a private entity for development, if you turn around and sell it.
All right.
Um, it's not as big of a problem if you use it for some other public purpose.
Right. Okay. All right. I feel better about that. Um, and I'm, I'm not indicating or alluding to the fact that we might not, I'm just, we're not sure.
Mm-hmm.
And we're still determining that, and I, I hate to define something saying, okay, we're gonna borrow the money for that library lot up there, so.
Yeah.
Um.
It's a good question, Jerry.
Thank you. Um, can I jump over to water system projects?
Sure.
And ask a question?
Absolutely.
Jeff or Mike can probably answer this one. Is there, are there a couple of big-ticket items in that seven hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, Je- Jefferson Street, right, Jeff?
Uh, yes.
Okay, got it.
Jefferson Street accounts for about, uh, five hundred thousand.
Okay. Say no more. That answered my question.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Jim? Jim, stay on while I go through these motions.
Yeah, would you, in case another question comes up?
Yeah, okay. So we're gonna start going through the motions, Jim.
Okay.
And we stay with the, still we're done. Uh, it shouldn't take long, I don't think. So here we go. Item E, uh, discussion possible action, initial resolution number seventeen dash zero nine, authorizing eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar general obligation bonds for library projects.
Some move. Second.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F, discussion possible action, initial resolution number seventeen dash ten, authorizing seven hundred thousand dollar general obligation bonds for water system projects.
Some move?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, discussion possible action, initial resolution number seventeen dash eleven, authorizing a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar general obligation bonds for sewage system projects.
Some move?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item H, discussion possible action, initial resolution number seventeen, dash twelve, authorizing three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar general obligation bonds for community development projects in tax incremental district number three.
Some move?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, can you explain, uh, this a little bit more, Mike?
This, this is for the, uh, Jefferson Crossing project. This is our, our TIF, us, our TIF work, our, our work related to the project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item I, discussion possible action, resolution number seventeen dash thirteen, providing for the sale of two million dollar general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two oh one seven B.
Some move?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, so is this two million dollar purchase?
Or sale.
Or, sorry, sale? Is this gonna be added to the one-point-five-eight million dollar sale for a total of three-point-five-eight million dollars in sold bonds?
Jim, did you hear the question, Jim?
Yes.
Yes, uh, yes, it, uh, you are correct. There's two million dollars worth of bonds and a million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars of notes. So you add the two of them together, you're borrowing three million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Thank, thank you, and thanks for correcting me on the, the one-point-five-eight, it's, it's notes, not bonds.
Yep.
Any further questions on I? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item J, discussion possible action, resolution number seventeen dash fourteen, providing for the sale of one million five hundred and eighty thousand dollar general obligation promissory notes, series two thousand and seventeen A.
Some move? Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jim, I think we're all set.
We are set. Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate your good help. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item K, continuing review of two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement plan. Uh, this include the tax rate comparison, total levy increase for debt service and operating budgets for years two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two CIP sheets, and then we'll get to the questions Mike asked for the board.
Well, the, the tax rate comparison, that's just a, you can refer to, I know that's, it was in the last, last packet. And then, uh, as I mentioned, what Lisa and I did was, we took, so, so this is the handout that Jim, uh, when Jim was here, this is Nimmel, attached, he had these charts, and, uh, he had three charts. It was, uh, one chart was without any municipal facilities, and then one chart was with municipal facilities based on a twenty-year, uh, bond, and then, and then another chart that included, uh, going out forty years and taking a U, USDA loan out. And, um, what we thought it would be, sometimes, there's so many numbers on those, on the charts, that we thought we'd just sort of focus on, uh, the, the next couple of years. And then we did some, we did a projection on what the levy could be for operating to try to come up with a total impact on the average house. And so, so that's, that's what's on K two. Now, the only thing we didn't do was, we, we, at this point, we just held the average home value of two fifty-seven as a constant. So you, every, every year, this would, you know, go up. But again, there's some guesswork in, in all this anyways, depending what the board does with the CIP and everything. But I think we were trying to give you the total levy, the total picture of debt service plus operating for a total levy, both doing the twenty-year option and then doing the USDA loan option on that sheet.
So, so speaking for myself only, um, I would say that I would follow Mike Ayler's guidelines and recommendations, because it comes from years of experience, and we pay him to advise us on these matters. And, uh, Mike's guidelines, as far as I remember, were borrow as much as we can for as long as we can, because rates aren't gonna get lower.
Mm-hmm.
And number two, don't exceed the fifty percent trend line, because that's a danger zone.
Yep. And, and one thing I wanted to mention again about the, the CIP that you have in front of you is that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, this is basically the first draft. When Lisa and I, the only thing we did a little bit was, we moved some of the street projects around with Jeff, but we didn't really try to revise it, because we thought the board should just see what the department heads are requesting. And so that's what, that's what Jim based these charts off, was his first draft. And this was trying to say before, is I, I think, um, if the board wants, you know, we're willing to go in and, and try to move some things around to, um, and then have Jim rerun this. I mean, I think one of the questions is that, um, at this point, Lisa and I are not sold on doing a forty-year loan for, for the facilities. I know it drops the interest, or it drops the impact on a, uh, an average home, but you're paying so much more interest. And, and then Jim is saying, Jim Mann said, well, like, City of Bearwood just did that for the municipal facility, and they were crossing over the sixty percent trend line, so they had to do that. And, uh, and typically what you do is you take it out for forty years, and when you hit the twenty-year, twenty-year, uh, time period, you refinance it. So you're twenty years into it, your building's twenty years old, and now you still have another ten years, whatever, to pay off. And now you're trying to fix a twenty-year-old building. At the same time, you still haven't paid it off, so. I, I'm, I'm leaning towards saying if we're gonna do stuff, we should, we should just stick with a twenty-year bond. But I'm not saying it's a decision, but it's, it's kind of lean that way. I know Doug brought up the concern about all the interest you pay, uh, with the forty-year loan, so. But we, we gave you both examples on, on this sheet, so.
But to Doug's point, didn't you just address that? You refinanced that twenty years for ten years, and then you have a thirty-year note?
Well, I, I just, I threw ten years out. I'm thinking like, that's what you do at your house, you know, you, you don't take out another twenty years. Um, but my point is that if you have a municipal facility, um, and you have it for twenty years, it's gonna need a, you know, a new roof, and so the very time you're having to do probably some major maintenance on it, you're still paying it off. And so, it'd be something for the board to think about when we go in there. And you can see, if you look back on K two, the difference is two twenty-eight versus one seventy, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big difference, the twenty years versus the forty years. So it, it'll be a policy decision that we'll have to, we'll have to make, um, as we go forward. Um, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. I was just saying that, um, again, we didn't really massage this too much, and, um, it, you know, and what Lisa did for me on Friday was she, on this sheet, she, uh, she bolded some of the key, uh, projects in each year. Um, we, we are, we are putting, I had Lisa run me something today, I'm gonna find it here. I think we're gonna spend, so, for example, if we don't change anything in the CIP from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two, we will borrow six-point-six billion dollars for streets. So that's pretty significant. So that's, that's, that's one-point-two million of, uh, just mill and overlay, just doing like we did Cedar Drive this past year, you know, just doing that. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, uh, extend North Perry Parkway. We're going to do the next two phases with the county during that time period. We're going to reconstruct State Street and Washington Street and, you know, South Main, so it, it's a lot of projects. The county's gonna put in over a million dollars of their money into, into, into doing those two projects with us, so. So one of the things we could do in the CIP is to try to, uh, maneuver the streets around a little bit so that we're not, you know, they're not sort of ganging up on us and, and, and raising the levy. But if the board looks at, at this sheet and feels comfortable with these increases, then I, I don't, I'm not sure, I will probably end up doing too much work on it. We also have in the CIP, we're spending, um, I'm proposing at least to spend over a million dollars for park improvements over the next couple of years, um, in helping to renovate J C Park West, uh, put restrooms in Ki- Keller Alpine and start, uh, building the two plane fields also on Keller Alpine, the West Side Park. Um, as I mentioned, extension on North Perry Parkway, South Main resurfacing from State to South Perry Parkway, that's a street that needs, should be worked on. Probably, probably the number one complaint that we receive in the fall is leaf pickup, so Jeff and I are proposing to purchase a standalone little leaf vacuum truck for two hundred thousand dollars. We, we are showing the new library being built in two thousand and nineteen, and then we also have the second phase of, uh, J C Park West that year. That's also the year that we would do, um, Grove Street to the Village of Limits with the county. And yet I think Jeff and I are talking about maybe making that the last project, because if we're gonna build something in the library, or in the church property, we probably don't want the construction traffic driving over a brand-new street, so we probably would do Janesville Street first and switch things around a little bit. In nineteen, we'd be doing State Street and Washington Street reconstruction. In two thousand and twenty, it'd be the, the next, and the last project with, uh, with the county. And then, then hopefully, we have the hotel going on in Park Street. We'd have to, we'd have to reconstruct Park Street and also the intersection of Janesville and Park, either, either stoplights or, or another roundabout down there. Uh, two thousand and twenty-one, the plan shows us doing something with the new senior center and, and something with this building, that's five million dollars. And two thousand and twenty-two, I don't think, in two thousand and twenty-two, there's, uh, doing Oak Street from, uh, Orchard to Night Guard, that's the big street project. Again, you go out that far, that, that's probably gonna get moved around a little bit, so. So there's a lot of things we're doing in the, in the CIP, and, um, and that's where I, I sort of said, sort of added to my question, what is an acceptable debt service that tax increase and schedule for completing key projects, because they're, obviously, they're tied together.
I didn't hear you mention any of the fire equipment that we're gonna have to borrow for.
Well, that's, that's in the fire district CIP. This is the village's CIP. But yeah, that's true, there'd be same thing, we'd be paying debt on that as well. Yep.
Jerry?
Yeah, I've got some questions and comments, probably all for Mike. But, uh, referring back to the beginning of your discussion, Mike, I would discourage you from doing any forty-year borrowing. I, it just, the, the interest impact is, I, I think it's just too heavy interest-wise. Where are we in relationship to that fifty percent?
Well, we're, we're, we're under it because, because we haven't been borrowing that much money, but.
Yeah. Do you know where, about where we're at? We thirty, thirty, forty?
I think we're down there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you, I know you haven't been able to see this, but here's our exist, here's the, here's the trend line, Jerry.
Mm-hmm.
Here's our existing debt. It's, it's, because
So we've got some room.
It's going off, because we're, our, in eighteen and nineteen, our debt starts to fall off.
Okay, so we're not close to the danger zone, so we've got some latitude.
We would be if we follow, and we, we don't make any changes in the CIP, well, we could bump over it a little bit in the next couple of years.
Okay, that's where I'm going. So the big decision for this board is, how much do we wanna increase the tax levy?
Well, I think, and it, again, it, it's kind of a two-part question, is, and then the timing of the, of the projects.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay.
I mean, I mean, the problem is that you typically don't, in a community our size, that's why I had Lisa run this for me, you don't typically, um, borrow for almost over six million dollars of streets in a five-year period, and spend almost thirteen million dollars on buildings at the same time. I mean, it's just not a thing you typically do.
Mm-hmm.
But again, we didn't feel comfortable trying to stretch things out until we had a more in-depth discussion with the board about these items.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then some questions about the capital improvement plan.
Mm-hmm.
And my experience with these is that, um, you know, if you wanted to go with this, I'd be okay with it, because it's a moving, it's a moving, I mean, you just keep, you start
You go out two years and it, yeah, I know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, a week after, or a day after you finalize it, you're gonna start changing it again, because things change. You, you, something breaks, a piece of equipment goes, you know, goes out, and so you have to plug that back in, so.
That, that's, that's a good point, Jerry.
You know, I'd rather had, I'd, I'd recommend that you use your time somewhere else.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I do have a question about it, and it has to do with borrowing for, uh, small-ticket items.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not, you know, I'm not even gonna say, but, you know, say a thousand-dollar item. I'm not gonna pick on any one department.
Yeah.
But a thousand-dollar item, and we're gonna do a how-many-year borrowing.
So Jim was sort of talking about that a little bit, that, you know, when, when we borrow for some, some of the small equipment, you know, we, we pay, we pay that off faster. But typically, as I was mentioning before, we like to buy that in, with cash.
Right.
And we And we did that in 16, and unfortunately, we did that and we drained Fund 414.
Okay.
And, and so, and we were talking in the fall, our goal was to try to keep the tax increase for average house around $50 or $60, so we were not able to put-
Okay.
-new levy into 414. We hope, once the audit's done, that Lisa and I can come back and say to the board, you know, we're hitting our fund balance percentage in the general fund, and we recommend transferring money into 414, so that in 18 and maybe 19, we can go back to paying cash for the smaller items.
Okay, and that would be the preferred method of doing it, because I, I guess, my concern is that we have an item with, say, a life of three years, and we're borrowing for five or 10.
Five years, yeah, I agree, Jerry.
And it's just not a good business practice, but I guess we've, we've eliminated our options at this point, is what you're saying.
I mean, we typically do not do this, we just, we just don't have the cash to do it this year.
And that's why I bring it up. I don't think we've done this ever, that I'm aware of, have we?
We've typically had cash in 414, we just, we bought a lot of equipment in 16.
Right.
And, and I'm not saying it was a bad thing to do, but we did, and we had to, I mean, so, we could have borrowed more money last year, but we didn't, so we used cash instead. It's kind of going, you know, we could have had some money left over, we could have raised the levy and not do it, but I think, I think we hit our goal in adjusting the levy for 17, so.
Okay. Those are my questions, thank you.
That's a good question, thank you.
So will there be money left to increase the pay of employees? We're looking at the pay study, and I think Brian has concerned the police department was so far behind there, and not other places too, but that, yes, you're really hurting recruiting of officers or retaining officers.
So let's go back, let's go back to the sheet, if you would please, K2. If you want to, you have that, okay. So if you looked at the footnote at the bottom, there's a little star on the bottom, Steve?
Okay.
Yep, so, you know, we show, and so to answer your question, people watching, is yes, we have, we've considered that. So we're showing a $50 increase in operating in 18, but we're going to 75 because we feel that's when, after doing the salary study, that, you know, we're going to have to cover those adjustments. And that's why, if you looked, in 19, an average house, the, for debt service, it's only going about $23, so that was our way of trying to, again, balance the increase on property owners of, you know, $100 between debt service and operating in 19. Again, you know, that's two years out of this, but we recognize that we're going to have to have more levy in the operating budget for salary adjustments.
Okay. Lots of things to consider. I mean, we've got the buildings we want to construct, and then we're going to have staff for those buildings, I'm assuming, at some point. And the annual increase, just to keep the services going that we have.
Yeah.
And then the other thing that comes into play here, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying it's something we have to consider when we look at, we're going to raise the levy X number of dollars or X percent, is the bonding that the school just did too, that's going to be on the property tax.
Oh, the reoccurring?
The reoccurring part of the school budget that hits the village property tax, so. And again, those are, you know, I know sometimes it seems like we're dragging our feet on these decisions, but these are very complicated decisions.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I'd like the village residents to know that they should be very proud of this village because of the position it's taken towards growth. And I know I've said this before, but you just have to look over to Stoughton and the trouble that they're having right now with a contracting school district and what that's meaning for revenue, and what that's doing to affect the ability to create infrastructure changes and to attract business and homes into the neighborhoods. So the truth is, you can't stand still, you got to grow. If you don't grow, you're going to start to contract.
All right.
But I think to Jerry's point, you got to grow in a smart way. And just, just over the weekend, I was out over at Bergamot Town Homes. They're full, they don't have any rental units available.
Correct.
And the reason is because people are moving into Oregon for the school district, and they're using that as a staging area to build in the Bergamot. So, so the reality is, is that all of this investment is coming back around, it is growing the tax base, which is going to decrease the tax levy. Verona's doing some pretty great things right now because Epic has come off the tax levy, right? But that was an investment, and that was a discussion on the front, and I'm sure, about giving tax dollars to Epic, and in the hopes that in the future, that would come back and benefit the community. So the work that we're doing right now with Jefferson Crossing, and the work that we're doing right now with the library and the senior center, all of these investments in infrastructure, these are setting us up for the growth that's going to come down the pipe for communities that can look forward like that. And the public-private partnerships and the work that we've done with the fields and their historic renovations and whatnot in town. All of that, all of that is necessary. So that's not a very numeric conversation, but I think it's a very important conversation to have, because philosophically, you either believe in that or you don't believe in that. And I think we should be very proud that that's the position we've taken.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Jeff.
I would like to add a counterpoint to that. I went to the Census Bureau website, and I wanted to find out what percentage of homeowners are elderly, over 65. And it's rather large, it's almost 20% of the homes that are owned by people in this village are above 65. So that means that many of them are probably on fixed incomes, so it is a consideration. And I'm just wondering, Mike, I mean, you're comfortable, given that circumstance, that fact, in proposing the increases that you have?
Well, again, like I said, this is the first draft, and that's why I'm asking the board is, you know, we just ran these numbers, I mean, I could spend weeks, Lisa would love doing that with me, I'm sure. We could make this like our, kind of like a budget where we come back with different versions of it, and, but I need, if you want me to do that, I need a little direction from the board. What do you, you know, what do you, what do you want to see? I mean, basically, all I'm doing is, we took this, we gave this to Jim, and from there we created 11K2. And so I haven't really played it wrong with that much, I've just given you some pretty broad numbers.
Yeah.
And if you're saying that you want to see something different, then we're willing to do that.
Okay.
And that's item four, right?
You can, yeah, I mean, it could, it's, I just put it on there just as a-
If I could carry Doug's point a little bit further, I appreciate the research you did, and statistics freak me out, right? There's a Dilbert statistic, right, where the arrows are going down, and it says, if we can make numbers say anything, why are we making them say this, right? Flip the chart over and they're going up, right? So Doug makes a really good point about the statistics, I don't know whether they're true or not, but let's say that they are, that 20% of the homeowners in the village are over 65. That's not the same thing as saying that 20% of the homeowners over 65 are destitute or low to moderate income. Those over 65 residents could be high-income, we don't know, it doesn't break it down that way. But I do think it's important for us to remember that there are people in this community that could struggle, and not just the seniors, the young and single families as well, as the community starts to grow and as we start to join our peers with regards to the tax rate for homeownership in the village. And we have to be prepared to help those folks stay in the village. And I think the ways that we do that are the food pantry building and providing affordable food options. I think that assisted housing for seniors is another way that we help them do that. And I think that continuing to plan for low to moderate income housing in the village, like what Habitat for Humanity can do, is another way for us to continue to provide for that demographic that can't afford to grow with the village. And we haven't really talked a whole lot about what the village can do to create affordable housing options outside of the senior center, but Habitat, for example, would love it if the village would assemble some real estate and donate it to Habitat for Humanity and let them just come in and build houses there. Developers are coming in all the time, asking to assemble land for development. There's other communities that routinely recommend or require that maybe 10% of that development be designated low to moderate income housing. So there's things that we can do as a community besides slowing down our growth or stopping our growth to help those folks that are at risk. Do you have a counterpoint?
Well, my only point was that it's an important decision, point that we derived that, and I think we need to consider the impact of the projects that we've proposed on the population as a whole, and their ability to fund it. It's not a trivial matter.
No.
Yeah, I think Mike Slavney could probably help us out with some of the income ratios in those different population groups too. So, I mean, we know, you saw 20% are over 65, but like Jeff said, what percent of those can afford the increases in taxes?
Right.
I think it's important to know that too.
Excuse me, didn't you say 55? 20% are over 55?
No, 65.
65, okay. I misheard.
Further questions, comments, observations? So have you learned anything?
A lot. I mean, we're happy just leaving it, I mean, we borrowed for 17, and we can leave the plan as it is. Again, I just don't, I just don't think it's realistic to have $13 million in the five-year project plan for streets and buildings. I mean, in our, a community our size, you're going to increase taxes, and I think somehow we maybe have to spread that out a little bit. But, but maybe we should make a decision first about the library and maybe have that as a starting point, and, because, I mean, one of the things we can do on this is move the street projects around. That's one of the things we can do, not easily, but we can do that, which will then spread the debt out somewhat. And then we have, the board really hasn't had a chance to really, to look and have an in-depth discussion, Jeannie has a little bit more than, maybe some other board members, about the improvements to the parks. So we should have a discussion about that, maybe before we start, you know, moving things around in the CIP.
You know, just a little bit of input that I can offer is that if, the one thing I hear about the most are the roads. I don't know if anyone else shares that sentiment, but I received that comment more than any other comment.
Yeah.
When are you going to start fixing the roads? It's like, well, we are.
Oh, it's the county roads, that's, that's the complaints we get.
Right, right.
So I think once Jefferson gets fixed this year, that's going to be a, and that piece of North Grove, which is in really bad shape. But I grant you, I think South Main needs to get fixed, it's, that stretch needs to get fixed.
I don't get that comment as much as I used to, because I think we fixed some key roads, which is, hey, thanks for that.
Yeah.
That's been helpful as a board member.
Yeah.
But Jerry and I probably travel in a little bit different demographic circles. When I hear more, sorry, it's true.
Good for you, Jeannie.
My hair is still, well, my, I color my hair. I don't know, I, when I hear, what I hear more is people, not necessarily complaining, but making comments of, when are the services going to meet their expectations of a community of 10,000 people? I don't know, I see, I see two demographics in this, in this village, see the demographics of the people who have grown up here and lived here forever, and they still think of it as a little town. And then I see the people who have lived here three or four years, and they think of it as a 10,000-person town, and they want a better library, they want a better senior center.
Better parks.
They want more modern parks.
Plain fields, yeah.
They want a park and a rec director, and they're like, why don't we have any of these things? You know, and then I start explaining, all these things cost money. But I, I, my hope is that we get out of the small-town mindset, we appreciate the staff that we have, we have extremely professional staff, and we keep growing smartly and steadily. But I, I would hate to, I mean, in my opinion, taxes are going to have to increase, the question for me is how much?
Right.
And I think that's the million-dollar question that Mike's trying to get us to answer, and we're not answering. Right? And I don't think any of us want to answer it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But for me, for me, I know taxes are going to go up because we're a growing community. You look anywhere in Dane County, it's all about location, location, location. We are extremely growing county, and if you want to continue to live here, your taxes are going to have to increase, it's just seriously a matter of how much.
Let's go back to that information from the assessor. I mean, I mean, our values went up, and we are, we are a growing community.
Yeah, I opened my envelope this, this week, and I looked at my house, I was like, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
In one year?
Yeah.
It's great if I want to sell, not so great if I want to keep living in my house.
I know, I know.
And also, like, if I sold my house right now, there's nowhere to move in this village, because I've actually looked. There's no open apartments, there's, there's 33 houses on the market in the 53575s.
Wait till next summer, Jeannie, downtown will be, so apartments will-
I'm just saying that these are good, these are very good problems to have.
I know, I know.
And so that's why I'm saying, the mindset needs to be, we're not a little village anymore.
And so what is that, you know, what is that, that increase?
I know.
And so, you know, when, when we look at, and we keep going back to K2 here, so, you know, if the board said to us, well, you know, for the next five years, village staff, Mike and the village staff, we want to see that, you know, we want to see that adjustment, that total adjustment around $100, you know? It'd probably be tough to build the library at that, but everything else, try to make it around $100, you know, or $90, something like that. Then we need to go back and we kind of, you know, move things around a little bit.
Well, I thought when we had the conversation last time, Jeannie did the numbers, I was really impressed, she did it all in her head, about the total increase over five years coming down to about $60 per year.
Yeah, this, this handout has changed. K2, it had now has a second column-
Yeah.
-where it has a total levy increase for debt service and operating.
Yeah.
So that's new information. But, but still, if you, if you, if you put it out through 2024, the numbers are, you could do it for $100 through 2024, but we're only talking through 2025.
Well, I went up to 2024, I mean, you know, it's, that's even past our CIP, so basically that's why the debt's falling off, so it's, those two last years are a little miss, little misleading, because you see the debt actually is going negative in those two years.
Yeah, I was excited to see that.
I know. Well, and some of it, some of it is that, you know, we do have debt falling off in 18 and 19, which, which helps us, but not enough to cover everything that we want to add to it. And, and, and I don't mean to, I'm not trying to get ahead of the board on this, but I think that we have to make a decision on the library, not to pick on the library. I think we have to make a decision on where it's going to go, and I think we have to make a decision about how big of a library are we going to build, because that is what's driving, maybe not the location, but that's what's driving this. Because if you sort of pull that out, you know, the rest of it, you could sort of work into it, but that's why, that's why you see that bump in the middle there, you know, it's because of building the library.
And the size is based on what the studies recommended?
Yes.
Right, the 35,000 square feet?
Correct, yeah.
Is that 35,000 square feet, is that like all furnished, or some of that's still a shell? Like, could we build the whole 35,000 square feet, so we don't get in a position where we are now, but leave some of it empty for growth?
So-
Does it still cost this much then?
Yes, yes.
Crap.
Yeah, well, well, so let me, let me, so I think one of the things that the board will have to decide on, and this is very typical when you do a municipal facility project, is what's, what's the total cost of the project? You know, I always tell people this story, when I went to, I worked for a community in Illinois, and I got there, and they had just built two brand-new fire stations, and they had, they had borrowed the money for the, for the buildings and all that, they forgot to budget for the staff, additional staff, to staff the additional new building. They didn't budget for it, you know? So I think what we need to do is, if we're going to build a new library or senior center, we need to look at the total picture, the building, the soft cost, the cost of the property, and, and as I think Jerry mentioned, the staffing, so that we don't put a future board into a, into a pickle. And, so yeah, so what, what is the total cost for the size of the library? I mean, you know, one of the, one of the options that Mike's going to talk about, which is in the final civic campus plan, is the library does go up on the, on the church property, and that, then the village sells the senior center and the library building, and we redevelop that into senior housing with some affordable housing on there. Senior center's going to have to go somewhere in the meantime, you know, they could probably move into the library for a while, but at some point, they're going to have to be off the block, so will they, you know, locate on an interim basis in the new library possibly? You know, that's a possibility. I will tell you that we're working on TIF 5, and you're going to, you're going to see this next week, that that redevelopment block has some real potential for generating some really nice increment for the village, if we end up doing the joint project over there. It's, it's going to, it's going to easily cover us losing the sanctuary project on that property, and there's some concern- I know there's some concern by Jerry that we lost that tax. We're gonna actually probably get more over there doing it possibly.
Really?
Yeah, possibly.
And I do want to mention, since we're talking about impact on the tax levy, that I that I disagree with being afraid of that forty-year financing.
Okay.
As you and Jerry have 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 mentioned that you've got a concern about it.
Yeah.
For a couple of reasons. First, that when you build a building right, it's an eighty-year building on the outside. So, yeah, take away the roof, which is a major improvement. You're you're, you're not really talking about large dollars to maintain that building if it's built right. But second, that's the lever. That that's the lever that you can use to reduce the impact on the levy when you have to borrow a lot of money. And if we take that off the table, that's gonna, that's gonna cause the impact to go up. And I think what happens then is we start to have a conversation about what we can afford to not borrow for because of the impact on the levy, as opposed to the conversation about what should we be building because the rates are between, well, the average rate's two point nine percent.
Yeah.
And to me, that is, that's the greater conversation that we need to be having right now without discounting.
Or in twenty years, or in twenty years, you're, whenever, you're having to do the next expansion of the library, for example. So now you're you're paying, you know, you know, and and maybe what do is maybe we put a new impact fee. And I've been talking to Matt about that. Maybe we build a library and now you introduce a new impact fee for the next expansion of it at some point.
Well, and one thing that your graph showed is that the borrowing, the the borrowing tail tails off as the principal is paid over time. So so truthfully, in inside of five to ten years, there's gonna be another gap between the fifty percent line and the current debt service that you could fill by refinancing the forty-year note that reduced the impact in the first five years.
I I I think, we'd have to ask Jim if you could refinance that. Yeah, I'm not sure, sometime.
Yeah, there's a, I think there's a certain number of years.
It's gotta go off before you can refinance.
Before you can refinance.
I I we think that's the case.
So so working through some of those metrics a little bit might help address Doug's, Doug and Jerry's concern about the overall cost of borrowing over a longer period of time. Because in fact, what you're, what you're doing is planning to refinance and reduce the total length of time borrowed by as many years as possible to reduce the cost of borrowing over time while taking advantage of the lower payments upfront because of the longer amortization.
So you're gonna take a thirty-year mortgage on your house as you, it's the same kind of idea. You, you know, you know, the money at some times to, so you take a thirty-year mortgage out and as you get a better job or something, you refinance. It's the same in principle. But I think there may be a stipulation. I'm not sure you can refinance it. Well, that's a good, I guess you brought it up. I'll have to ask Jim about that.
And a quick question for Nikki, because I I think we've covered this before, but when we take the library to thirty-five thousand square feet, how far into the future are we projecting that to be enough?
That would be as far as the general space needs analysis went for the village. Was that
Thirty, twenty thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So twenty thirty.
Thirteen years?
That's not that long.
No.
Oh, I know, it's amazing, isn't it? That's true when you take a, so let's say that in, well, let's say that's in fifteen or twenty years, the board, the library board wants to expand the library and now you're still paying the those are the decision, you're still paying the debt off on the on the original building.
McFarland, for instance, and other libraries that I'm aware of as well, like they've built fairly recently and they're already looking at the need to expand.
But it's good to be having those conversations now and going with eyes open. You know, it's not that different than the fire department saying, look, this is the equipment we think we're gonna need ten years from now and and being able to feather that in. Because again, that the curve is constantly falling off. And so I think ideally what you're trying to do is as as the borrowing drops off, you're trying to replace it with the new borrowing that's necessary so that effectively what you wind up with is a gentle slope.
Exactly.
Instead of, you know, eighteen, nineteen, everything falls off and then we go back up again.
Right. Yep.
Other questions or thoughts? Have we clarified anything?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I think we'll just leave it and
Yeah.
let's get through the library discussion and the senior center where that's going and.
You know, I think we have to remember where we're headed is we're gonna all have to decide how much can we impact taxes and still make things work.
What are you comfortable with?
What do you think the community is comfortable with?
Right.
I mean, what do you think we can raise without impacting the seniors and the less fortunate and the young families, you know, as we've discussed here? And, you know, Mike, maybe if you do a timeline of when you'd like these decisions made.
Well, I mean, next, next Tuesday, Mike Slavney's coming here. And so we have to, well, we have to we have, we have to make a decision by November, right?
November twenty-first.
November twenty-first this year about using the library impact fees. We, you know, the board decides, put the church, you know, the library on the church property and the board's gotta request those fees from the library. So we, I would say by November. And it'd be nice to know that before that because we're be working on the twenty eighteen budget and, you know, these items will start flowing into the budget preparation at some point, so.
Well, I think once we decide where and and how big.
Yep.
It'll all flow, yeah.
Well, just a little comment. Of course, we build the the library as we plan on building it now. But there will be more space up there. If we build it where the Methodist Church was, there will be more space to add on there. I mean, it won't take it, take the whole space up there.
Yes, that's that's correct. It it, I don't think it's as big as, because the lots, the lots sort of strange, you know, you goes like this and then goes out to that. Yeah, yeah, you you would definitely have a so a chance for some expansion at some point, yeah.
Yeah, I recall from Mike Slavney, there's not as much room for expansion as one would think, given that lot, but Mike can answer that for us next week. We should be sure and ask him that question, so we know.
I do remember him saying that it would be cheaper to build the size that we want right away and leave it empty than to add on. I do remember that.
Well, yeah, that's when when Fitchburg built their city hall in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, they built a, well, three-story building. And I told people this story. I went up to the third floor and it was completely vacant. It was, it was empty and they, but in about five years later, it was, it was fuller. Fuller staff, so, yeah, exactly. People do it all the time.
And I think that's okay.
They'd build a big shell and then they, yeah.
Anything else on item K?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to item L, discussion possible action. Beginning Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation, May seventh through May thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. This proclamation recognizes the works of the clerk as well as those who work with them and stresses all the vital things they do, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that people don't recognize. At the bottom, I'll read what it says. Now, therefore, the village president and village board is hereby recognized the week of May seventh through May thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Peggy Hague, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Peggy goes about her business in a very calmly efficient way, calmly most of the time, quietly efficient way and very thorough and really does a great job of doing what a what a clerk should do and exemplifies that. So we appreciate that. So we'd need a a motion to approve this.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And I know the board agrees with what I've said and would probably add even more to it. So, thank you, Peggy. We appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item twelve reported committees, we covered in item number three. Item thirteen, minutes not requiring action, the Oregon Fire MS District Commission meeting for March second, two thousand seventeen. Fourteen is unfinished business. There is none before us. New business is approval of pending new operator licenses. Has approved by the police department. We have won the legend of Bergamot. Joe Learned.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have some future agenda items listed under sixteen. And seventeen is a motion for adjournment. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.